... meeting to order for the August 18th City Commission. First of all, we will have invocation from Pastor Mark Abizel of Hope Covenant Church.
Let's pray. Father, your word tells us to walk humbly with you, to love mercy, to do justly and do what's right. We pray that you would help our city to embody those things. We pray that you would guide this meeting tonight and the things that are on the agenda, that they would be considered and that you would give wisdom for how to proceed. We pray for those who have authority and power, that you would give them special wisdom and insight and that may you help our city and our life together to increase and thrive and flourish, that everybody may live a fuller life and that you may be honored in all things. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Very good. Okay, we'll stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is proclamations, and we don't have any this evening that I'm aware of. Personal appearances, we don't have any scheduled. So ladies and gentlemen, we're ready for Agenda Item Number One for Public Comments. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and state your name and address and have something to say, you're more than welcome.
Marlene Rethman, 1153 South Arthur. Earlier this summer, I stood before you to complain about the condition of a city-owned lot at the corner of South Arthur and West Finney. It was a hazard and an eyesore. Just as we come to complain, I think we should also say thank you if the problem is rectified. The very next day, a crew, I might add, a very large crew descended on the lot with equipment to remove the abandoned items, tear down the house, and mow the six-foot-tall grass. If you drive by this lot now, it is clean and well-maintained. Thank you. I don't know what plans the city has for this lot since it is in the flood plain and has high-line wires running close by it. I would like to recommend that the city consider the following proposal for this property: donate it or sell it at a very reasonable cost to Newmanna to use for their mission, such as planting fruit trees. It would be a good lot for that. Thank you again for rectifying this problem. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks. It's always nice to hear that.
You're welcome.
Is anybody else that'd like to come forward? Okay. If not, we will close public comments and we will move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Consent Agenda. There's only one item on there, which is the City Commission minutes for August 4th. Any questions, commissioners, on that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are ready for Agenda Item Number Three, which is rezone and special use permits for property located at 2700 West Sixth.
Yes, Mayor, tonight before you, you'll have three motions to consider. One will be the rezone of 2700 West Sixth Avenue, which is Oil Hill Elementary School owned by USD 375. The rezone request is to rezone from R1 Residential to OI Office Institutional. Then you will also have a special use permit allowing an educational facility. And then the third thing to consider is a special use permit allowing off-site advertising on the sign located at that property. This was an agenda item that was brought to you back in July. We sent it back to the Planning Commission on July 24th for consideration. The rezone of the property passed with a six-oh vote. The special use permit to allow the educational institution was approved six-oh, and the special use permit to allow off-site advertising with conditions passed four to two. It was recommended for some conditions on the special use permit, and they had to do with the size of the off-site advertising. Let me get here. That it had to be a third of the size of the identification sign on the same structure. The only off-site advertising allowed on that sign will be for Verus Bank. The sign shall, of course, meet all the landscape requirements of the City of El Dorado. The off-site advertising shall be illuminated in a consistent manner with the rest of the sign. The color of the sign shall be complementary to the entire structure throughout, and the sign shall not be illuminated between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Certain number of those conditions are already in our sign regulations of our zoning code. The other ones kind of mix with the nature of the comprehensive plan and the intent of the sign regulations. A lot of the sign regulations talk about consistency with the structure, how it fits the area. So staff drafted some of those commission conditions, and the Planning Commission recommended approval for four to two with those conditions.
Scott, the only question I'd have was, is there anywhere else where we say a sign shall not be illuminated between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m.?
That's standard with our regular zoning, sign regulation zoning code. Any sign that abuts a residential neighborhood shall not be illuminated between those hours.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions. As I looked through the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, one of the Planning Commissioners discussed the possibility of maybe an exemption for these properties that would allow off-site advertising. I'm guessing similar to the exemption we have in place for sports facilities. I guess just on a side note, that's something that would be a good discussion item moving forward as we look at some possibilities in the future. But as it pertains specifically to this agenda item, I guess my questions would be for the 375 representatives that are here, and that is Mr. Johnson or Mr. Nyibarger, if you guys, these recommendations, conditions, are they, do they meet the, do you guys still meet the needs of what you need to do?
Good evening. Thank you. Mr. Nyibarger had a meeting with a lay sign company, and they had adjusted the size of the advertising piece on the front of the sign to comply with the request there. The color of the sign, I think Dick has a sample of that that he can show you this evening, the paneling that will be used around the sign. And then we do have some limitations with the base of the sign is concrete, and the electrical conduit has been run out to that location already because of the construction. That was part of the construction. And so it is prepared to receive the sign once it is approved, and then we plan then to do our best to make that appealing. Our thought was perhaps PKO and some of those organizations could help keep that landscape looking nice with some flower pots or those types of things. So I think we've been able to adjust and to compromise to meet the request of the zoning office there, and we're ready to go forward if you guys would allow.
Can you give your name and title?
I'm sorry, Jim Johnson, Superintendent USD 375.
Thank you, Jim.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is the lighting issue a problem with the school?
Between 11:00 and 7:00?
Mm-hmm.
I think the mechanism will be there so that that can be timed to turn off and on. One, the only concern we would have perhaps would be the early morning of school closing and that type of thing. It's very nice to be able to get that information out as quickly as possible. We try to make those calls before 6:00 a.m. to staff, and it would be nice to have that information scrolling probably before 7:00, but you know, we can live with that.
I'd like to understand this lighting thing. So you're saying any commercial property that abuts residential cannot have a light on after 11:00 o'clock, a sign?
In our current regs, as of 2009, that is the regulation, any new signs.
So if a new quick trip comes in, they can't have a sign open after 11:00 if it was put where it is today?
Correct. If it's a budding, if it's property line, if it, not a property line, but if it abuts a residential zone district and residential use area, then they have to meet that restriction.
Does our sign at the middle school, they let all night?
I don't think they have a sign out.
At our high school?
I don't think it's...
I don't think they have one.
They just have those little monument signs, and they may just have a light shining on it where the sign regs speak more about the LED and the flashing and the level of it.
So, okay, is that it? Is it the LED sign that we're just talking about? It's all signs?
It is the entire.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I can understand the LED for sure. I mean, if your house was up next to it and it was a big LED and that was going all night, that could be a little...
There were some requests on the knit levels. I'm not, you know, I'm not sure what a knit is, but we did have Daktronics provider that electronic part of the sign give us a letter indicating that it did comply with those levels that were requested, so.
Yeah, so it has a different, I guess you would say illumination at night versus day. So it's not just blinding bright at night?
Yeah.
So, I guess to clarify then, you're talking about the light on the sign itself, the LED, not the spotlight that it's illuminating the sign from the front?
That would be my interpretation of it, correct?
There's even, there's rules to the talk about direction.
And where they can shine and, yeah.
It's not as simple as it sounds. The time element is as simple as it's handled, but not the illumination. I guess the best one that comes to my mind is in Independence, Missouri, that I said earlier, they have this great big sign advertising a mall, and it's lights that come crashing. And so I can't help but think our regulations are the same ones that federal government says this is what they should be.
Just like parking lot lights or security lights, if they had that, they couldn't, you know, direct that towards the houses across the street.
Does this sign face straight north?
It runs no.
For the traffic.
Faces east and west.
Yeah.
Yes.
What's the ordinance number? Mr. Johnson, well, she's, I'm sorry, go ahead. You're, I just wanted to...
G 1182.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Nyibarger, I appreciate the work that you guys have done to kind of build this relationship and this collaboration with the donor. I mean, I think, I think that it's great that our schools in our community that are kind of thinking outside of that box and trying to find some ways to collaborate with their businesses, so. And it's not just this. I mean, both 375 and 490, I think, have been successful at finding ways to work with their businesses and to keep them involved in our community. I just want to tell you guys I appreciate the work that you've done to make this happen, and the school looks great out there, and I'm hopeful that we'll get the sign put up and it serves its purpose for you guys.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 14-02-REZONE, requesting a rezone of the property at 2700 West Sixth Avenue from R1 to O1 be accepted and that ordinance number G 1182 be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I move that the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 14-007-SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow an educational institution in an OI zone at 2700 West Sixth be accepted and that ordinance number 1183 be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
I move that the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 14-005-SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow an off-site advertising sign with conditions located at 2700 West Sixth be accepted and that ordinance number 1184 be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Scott, the only question I have, I noticed that vote was four to two. The two, what would you say the two was against on that?
I'm not trying to speak for them, but I think the minutes might reflect that they were just against allowing off-site advertising on anything other than what's occurring on that property.
Yeah, okay. I didn't catch anything in those minutes, that's why I was wondering. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Fag?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for Agenda Item Number Four, which is project number 354, sales tax project.
The project we spoke about last meeting, which will be the complete reconstruction of Atchison Street from Locust Avenue to Cave Springs Avenue, and Cave Springs from Atchison to Denver. This evening, you are setting a public hearing for September 15th, 2014. This will be a sales tax project. However, a sales tax project like this, the property owners are responsible for half of the cost of the curb and gutter replacement and the driveway serving their property. So they will be notified of the public hearing, their proposed cost, and we will hold that public hearing on September 15th. We are, as the notification go out to the property owners, it will show contractor pricing. However, city staff will perform this work in-house. I'm confident we'll get those numbers quite a bit lower than what they'll be seeing. We'll make them aware of that in the letter we mail out after this meeting, if you do set the hearing. This will be a nice project for the Public Works Department to work on this fall, and with our recent bid opening we had at the last meeting, wanted to make sure we had enough funds of the $500,000 set aside for street rehabilitation, and we do, so.
How much do you estimate this one to cost?
The contractor price is right around $280,000, and with Public Works completing the work, we're thinking around $60,000. With not charging labor, that's just material, so keep that in mind.
Commissioner, if you've got any other questions?
But we do track labor, do tracks, and labor is a significant project, and you've even had it done in the past, no?
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
Any questions?
These roads are original, 1921, really haven't been touched since then. Well, literally have not been touched since then, so they're in need of complete tear-out replacement.
I'm excited. It needs to happen, and the time is now.
Resolution number 10.
2741.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number 2741, a resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on the advisability of the making of a certain internal improvement in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, under the provisions of KSA 12-6A01, as amended and supplemented and providing for the giving of notice of said hearing, paving improvements, project number 354.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we're ready for Agenda Item Number Five, Salary Schedule Resolution. Every year, the commission views and approves a schedule for salaries in our pay plan. Historically, that's been done in December at your last meeting. However, your ordinance requires that it be done at budget time, and so until, I guess we talked to you about changing the date, you're getting it today with your budget. I think you'll see, and as we've talked about, we did a salary survey with how many cities? Lots, lots of cities. We target to keep our salaries in the middle. Don't want to be the highest and don't want to be the lowest, and generally, when we do these, we find that we have some positions that migrated to the bottom. What else would we say? I guess that's where we count. Any questions, commissioners?
I notice we never can seem to get our commissioner or mayor salaries raised recently.
I am happy to do that. I suspect I've done that research for you every year. I think, again, I didn't do it this year, but it seems to me like you're not the lowest paid in the state, but you're certainly pretty close.
You can see it from there.
After tax, after donations?
After donations, yeah.
The...
It's after donation.
Yeah, I think, it's absolutely. I think the only, I think you have one city I remember that paid them 50 a year and maybe one that still does a dollar, and the rest are north of y'all, if I remember right. And so I, my position on it is that someone ought to be paid for their work, and so I think the citizens get their money's worth many times over at 100. And so I don't think that raising it would be inappropriate in any way, shape, or form because you're not in the middle.
He should have had two exhibits with the resolution. The first one is the pay grades, so that says what position gets paid at what grade. And then the second exhibit is the salary scale for each grade, so the high, the mid, and the low, how the range falls for people that are within that pay grade.
And then we, when someone comes to work for us, they don't necessarily start at the bottom. Different departments have different methodology to determine the skills that someone comes with, and if you're fully functional, you'll probably start in the midpoint. I, I kind of wanted to start and review exactly what benefits a city employee gets right now. Can you kind of run through a list of... Sure. Things that they get? You get part of your health insurance paid for, and it, the city currently pays 74, 76. 76, city pays 76% of the health insurance benefit, and the employee pays 24, and that is the same whether you do single or family. You get capers, and with capers comes a long-term disability, a little life insurance policy, again, that's paid for by employees and the city, and it's split different than it used to be. And actually, there's even two different tiers of capers now. If you're a policeman or a fireman, you get, your retirement is called KPNF, Kansas Police and Fire, and that is much different as well. It's a much richer benefit.
Didn't they just raise that to, where the individual has put in more and the city has put in more, and it's quite a number?
Yes.
That's for capers and KPNF.
Right.
But KPNF is 22 now.
22, and then that's city contribution, and then capers went up to a little over 10% for city contribution.
And so it's...
So that's a pretty good number.
It's a huge number. And, and so, and then if you're not in KPNF, you also get the 457 plan that's a match, and I think it's five to one. Is that true? Yeah. And so, and again, Mayor, for you and Chase, when the commission did that, the city's contribution for KPNF was 5% higher than the city's contribution for capers, and so the thought was, we won't make the retirement, we'll make it the same for all employees. And so that's how that came about. We also, yeah, we pay $10 a month, 15 a month if you're a member of YMCA. We have a very active wellness community with our inner city, and we encourage people to be healthy. So that differentiates some in your, what you pay for your medical insurance. For, well, that's what KPNF, oh, we buy that somewhere. Okay, we have a little life insurance policy with Mutual of Omaha, and it also, and then we have another one where you can buy.
Optional.
It's all city. You have Vision and Dental, again, it's employee-funded, it's not funded by the city. Aflac, you can get payroll deduction if you want. Aflac, again, that's all employee, no city.
And that additional life insurance that we offer, we don't pay anything in, it's only a death benefit. only a death benefit.
Is that part of capers? And I'm just kind of comparing, I'm, didn't capers pay like five times your wages or something? Or am I dreaming there? I might have that mixed up with something else. Capers paying you life insurance, that's my question, I guess.
They have a small life insurance. It depends on how long you've been in, if you keep your money in there the whole time. There's a bunch of stipulations that I'd have to look up to tell you exactly.
So five times, didn't write that?
No, it's like twenty thousand. And it may be when you get up there one time for salary.
Okay. Yeah, it's small.
How many of these schedules do we have, a what it is today versus what it is? Is that the start, or is that the midpoint? What are we paying today? Where's that information?
It was in, it would have been included in your, the last time you approved the salary schedule. It hasn't changed since then. I didn't include the historic numbers. Some of them went up, some positions went up in what they'll start at and end at, and some actually went down based on other cities, based on the survey.
But that information is not before us at this moment?
No.
So I don't know if it's up, down, sideways, even?
Without pulling your, the past time you did it, no.
Hard to compare. Very hard to compare.
I agree, Dave. That was on my list. That way, we can kind of see what we're moving. So you're right there. I was going down through my list. We do longevity pay, because that's something that we're changing on this thing. Vacation, of course, social security, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation, sick leave, safety standards. So that's, that's quite a list of stuff there. Do we know, or have we ever examined what our employment burden is? I had, I had an employer in town ask me what our employee burden percentage was, and I didn't know. Susie, have you ever heard of that? You understand what that is? It's kind of, if I'm going to pay you X number of dollars, what comes besides wage?
Oh, absolutely. We know that, and we've given it to our employees.
Okay. What's the average of employment burden here?
Thirty percent.
Because I was playing around. I got fired at sixty-three, and police, and I could be wrong. This is, we get this on Friday, and I try to run through this stuff. Police at forty-nine, legal at forty-four, building and zoning at thirty-nine. Now, this is in the budget that I'm talking about. Public Works at seventy-three. I don't know why that jumped up so high. Now, what I'm doing is kind of going in and taking, like, I think on police, I've looked, we got social security at eighty-seven thousand, retirement at two-hundred-and-six thousand, and then we got a 457B for sixty-nine hundred. I was kind of getting ahead of the game, but it kind of fits into this. Why would we have a 457 in the police budget?
Because some of the police employees do not qualify for KPNF, so like the court-
They're either doing one or the other.
The secretaries, yes.
Okay, one or the other, okay.
Mr. Mayor, the last payroll, or the last schedule is in your Dropbox under December seventeenth, two thousand twelve, in your meetings, if you want to look at it.
Okay.
I was looking at it. It wasn't in the eights, sevens, or nines.
The thing that kind of caught me, you know, when you go through this resolution, kind of step by step, the, it'd be interesting to see our resolution from last time. You know, not only our scale, but whatever resolution that we are getting away. Is that what you're saying that's in there? Okay, so I didn't, I didn't get to look at that. There was in here a deal about-
Exactly the same, Mayor.
Only the needs were changed.
Well, but this other stuff like longevity pay and all this stuff is still the same?
Yeah.
Hmm, okay. What was the $300 per year deferred compensation? She'll have paid a rate of $300 of deferred compensation. Such deferred compensation is be placed in applicable to Great Western Retirement Service account. When will we be doing that?
Yeah, the city for years and years and years had that $300 deferred compensation paid to ICMA RC. We have changed from ICMA RC to Great Western, and so it's, it's just part of the pay package, Mayor.
Would that be a level four retirement then? That's where I was getting kind of confused at, because you got social security number one, you got capers number two, you got Great Western number three, and then this deferred comp of $300 goes on top of that.
Great West is the same as the deferred compensation. The 457 is just managed by Great West, and that $300 is for salaried employees. It's part of the match that the city gives them.
It caught my eye on the last paragraph. Says employees hired prior to July one, two thousand nine will receive a match of 1.67 percent for every one percent employee contribution.
That is based on the tiers that are developed in capers, because you, the city contributes at different levels for tier one versus tier two, and so that is built in there to help match those tiers that capers-
So that's determined by capers?
We determined it, but based on capers.
Based on the tiers, based on that?
Capers requires those newer employees to pay more.
Right.
And so it leveled, again, it made everything leveled depending on when in capers you're at.
Or do you, you know, all those things we listed that employees get here, do you, are you in the Great Western plan too? Are you still in the ICMA plan? Okay, all right. Well, this is just me personally, and we've been in this conversation before, but I just kind of reiterate this. I know when I look in the capers plan, a third of the pie was social security, and a third of it was capers, and a third of it's self-funded. And that's the way most county or municipality people do that, as far as I know, unless we got something that I can see different. And what's happening right now, we got social security, capers, and this Great Western to where you're not really, we're doing all the funding of all the retirements.
I did some research after you asked that question the first time.
Okay.
I compared cities that are our size, so I looked at McPherson, Ottawa, Arc City, and Winfield.
Okay.
They all have capers, KPNF, and an additional 457 plan. The only one that doesn't have a match on their 457 plan is McPherson. And almost everyone that I talked to in the HR department said that they wish that they did more for their employees for retirement.
And McPherson pays their commissioners about fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars a year, if I remember right. That's what I remember.
I called Great Bend as well, but I didn't get a response.
You said McPherson, Winfield, and who else?
Ottawa and Arc City, all cities that are similar in population size to ours.
Do they do five percent?
They contribute at various different levels, but they all have an employer match, except for McPherson, which is employee only.
Yeah, because that, that's a big number that we're talking about here. I mean, it'd be interesting whether they do a one percent match or a five percent match.
Some of them even have additional retirement options that they offer to their employees, like Roths, and then they have outside agencies that their employees can contribute to as well. So we're not, we're not abnormal.
Okay. Did you check into like what the county's doing, or the school district, or the prison, or KTA, you know, the local jobs?
I only looked at municipalities that are similar to ours.
Yeah, okay.
I know you probably won't have this answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do you have this answer? Ask you?
I don't know either, if you're going to ask me.
They've got a better chance. Let's say for every $10 of wage paid, what percent, how many dollars above that is in contributions?
Well, the, and again, I haven't done it lately, but several years ago, we put it in everybody's employee in their check, because let's say you're making $10 an hour, and you're sad because you're going to make $10 an hour, and you add up the benefits significantly more. And again, so it's not proportional, but just your, if you have family health, that's four or five dollars an hour raise, if I remember my math right. So you may be getting ten in a cash wage, but that family medical will drop, and so I guess I'm not, I think that the benefits are easy to add. I'm not sure about FICA. If you have employees, you have to pay FICA. If you have employees, you have to pay workers' comp.
Well, that's really not, that's not a benefit. That's just above and above. I understand that very well, though. I'm mainly talking about-
Yes.
Retirement, health insurance, and any other stuff. Is it, is it five dollars per ten, or is it three dollars, is it eight dollars?
I don't know the answer to that. But I mean, it's, it's kind of a, it's a big number.
Just the social security and Medicare match that employers have to do is seven, seven or eight percent.
Seven, two, five, three, five.
It's like seven, two, five, isn't it? FICA, five minutes.
I just pay it every time.
Seven point two five.
Yeah. Okay, so that's seven, seventy, seventy-five cents per se. And then if the benefits are above that, I don't consider that as a benefit, but most people don't realize that's a, that's matched out of their, on their payroll. They pay it, and we pay it. But there is a point where it's hard to, people have to live on their cash, but they have to retire on their benefits. And it's hard to put, some, some people don't see value in benefits, because they want to see it in their paycheck, and usually that's the twenty to thirty-five age group, and then everybody starts getting a little more concerned after thirty-five, forty. So I don't know if you could put a right number on any of the benefits that it offers, or a company, or anybody else, and whether it's not, until the federal government says every business, or city, or entity has to have X amount of thing, I think it is up to the commissions to determine what those are, and, and I'm sure we can interview several sectors of the public and find out that they completely view it different. So what is right, what is wrong, what is almost right, what is in the middle? We have to be able to make the right choice for our employees, and-
And I think to stay competitive, I mean, now, a week and a half ago, the gal who cleans my teeth at my dentist is one of the councilwomen in Augusta, so I had a lot of time to just listen to her ramble as her hands were in my mouth.
With a stainless steel instrument?
Yeah. And the one thing that she had just kind of, you know, mentioned a few times, a frustration over there was staying competitive, because they felt like they were just training employees, and people were leaving. And I know for us, in a few departments, we've had a little bit of those, those issues. And I know that, looking at this, I mean, I'm certainly have been learning in the past year and a half, but nothing stands out as unreasonable at all. And I think some of the benefits that we do offer are going to hopefully keep us competitive where we're not just bringing in these young folks, training them to be great employees, and then losing them and starting all over again. And so I think, I mean, I think we offer something good. I mean, it's not the best around, because we're still losing some folks for, for more money and better stuff to bigger cities, but I'm okay with that. I think it's a good deal.
Seven years ago, when Tom and I were elected, this was one of the things that we tried to address as a commission, was wages and benefits and whatever. And I'm proud to say that, and Nick and Bill were part of it too, as it progressed through the years. But I feel good about taking care of the workers that take care of our city, that makes our water flow, gets rid of our dirty water, and keeps our snow off the streets. They do a lot of work, but most people don't even realize that they do. Our police force, our fire department. So that was one of the things that we set out as a commission back then, being elected, was to try and get to, and I expect and hope that city staff will maintain a certain level of restraint on being greedy, and, and I haven't seen that yet. And like I said, we can look at and discuss with many different people throughout the city, and yes, we're paying them too much, and the next group is going to say no, and everything else, but, but it is up to us that they make those decisions. So, and, and I think we've done right with our city in, in taking care of the retirement, and in taking care of the, the wages, and trying to attract and keep good people, because a twenty-year employee that knows every pipe in the ground is worth way more than the twenty-some dollars that we're paying him. So being an employer, I do know the value of somebody that's been there ten years versus somebody that just came on yesterday, but he's got a lot of degrees. Because you cannot buy knowledge, so. There's plenty of argument for what you're trying to say, Mike, but what's it going to change in the, in the mills? What is the total number we spend on benefits? Is it two mills? Is it three mills on the total? And do we cut it a half a mill and save everybody four dollars to three dollars on their house to sacrifice longevity of good employees? It's, it depends on whether you want to go for the future, or try and cut it all now and say that you really saved everybody a few dollars, and you cost yourself in the end, so. When you look at the retirement, when you look at that, is it fair? The United States government has retirement plans that make ours look bad.
Like, you know, I've had opportunities to talk to, as have all of us, to, to talk to some local businesses, citizens, and, and you're right, Dave, they've, you know, everyone's kind of got their opinion on where this should fall, but as I have these conversations, every one of them say that, everybody says the same thing, that is, well, you know, our police and fire, the KPNF thing is great, because, you know, these guys are out there stopping crimes, or putting out fires, they're saving lives. And during the course of that, those conversations with them, you know, my comment to them is, what we have to remember is that they need to have streets to drive on to, to be able to respond to those calls, and they need to have water that runs to those, you know, those fire hydrants to be able to put out fires. And so while it's absolutely an accurate statement that we've got a wonderful police force and fire department, the, the other departments throughout the city are able to facilitate and, and help provide that support and infrastructure for police and fire to be able to do their job. And so that's the reason we've been supportive in the past, and I still am of, of a 457, which used to be ICMA, now it's just a standard 457 by Great West. So, you know, I, I guess I would say I concur with, with what you've, what you've said, Dave. I know that as I've hired employees and built departments in the past, it's, you know, it's, it's the, the knowledge base that you can create, and we've had this conversation up here before as well, with some of the turnover and some of that knowledge that's lost, and then having to rebuild that knowledge base. So to be able to retain those employees, like you guys said, build a package that makes them want to stay here, but not be greedy, and I don't think that our stat, city staff or city administration has been greedy in this. I think that they're, you know, kind of staying right in the flow, and, and Susie, you know, interviewed the cities that are kind of in our, in our general, the size of our city, the size of staff that we have, and, you know, we're all trying to be competitive for those good employees, so I think that this is a great package, and a great opportunity to stay competitive and, and retain employees. So I think that this is a great package, and a great opportunity to stay competitive and, and retain employees.
How many, when you look at the different grades, are we bumping the, the upper end of those grades? Or, you know, when we look at eighty-eight, you know, is how many people, we paying eighty thousand a year in the city limits, current city employees?
I'm not sure that's information I'm allowed to disclose.
It's a general question.
We...
The upper end says eighty-six thousand, three forty.
I can't tell you off the top of my head how many are on the exact upper end, but some of the
And the lower end's fifty-eight thousand.
Right, and some of them did go down as far as the upper end when we redid the salary survey. Um, some of the upper ends dropped, and, um, some of the lower ends dropped.
But I don't think, and I may be wrong, you may have one department head, you're talking about department heads. You may have one that's, that's at the top, but I don't think so. I think they're all still getting merits. And when you think about it, your fire chiefs new, your police chiefs new, your finance directors new, rec directors new, um, public works directors new, I mean, none of them have been in departments for twenty years, and so I suspect, I, I don't think any of them are maxed out.
I, you know, because I was kind of looking down through like seventy-three, seventy, you know, there's fifty-nine thousand, sixty-three, sixty, sixty-three, those are max ends, you know, that, and, and when you do this employment burden, and I don't know what else to call that, with all the specials you put to that, that's a nice living for people. And, you know, you compare what other people in El Dorado's doing.
As you get higher in grade, we have less employees in those grades, and we have less people that are at the top of the grade. The majority of our bonuses come out of the lower ends because the people have been in that grade for so long, and they're just getting a bonus every year as opposed to a higher salary.
And you're considered low to moderate income, so eligible for all of us to chip in and pay you benefits, to feed you and to give you Medicare and that kind of stuff. If you, if you're a family of four making, I think, fifty-one thousand, so the number you just quoted, so our managers, our top managers, not top, but second-tier managers, are low to moderate income and eligible for food stamps and help us get block grants. So I guess I would disagree that, that fifty thousand dollars a year is, is you're living well. I don't think that's the case. I guess I would disagree with that.
Well, I, I'd say fifty thousand with all the benefits that go with that. You know, is, is the kind of thing that I, just my statement, and I don't know how many's bumped from the limit. That's why I was saying, why do we have to redo this schedule? Are we because we're bumping limits, or?
No, I don't care.
What's the reasoning behind doing a new schedule?
Because it's, because we don't do COLAs.
Okay.
So there's no cost of living raise that lots of places get. And so what we do is every, and actually, since the, since the recession, we got COLAs before that. Um, and so every three or four years, we will go out and compare ourselves with our neighbors to adjust the scope. I am indifferent to people being maxed out. And so Mayor, I'll tell you, digging a ditch is worth X amount of money. I, I, even if you've been doing it forty years, you can only make so much money digging a ditch in El Dorado, Kansas. And so, and that's what the scale sets, is how much is that work worth?
I think, I think also, though, in all fairness, I want to, you know, we, we talk about all the, the maximums in these ranges, you know, being sixty-three or sixty, but the minimums are forty, or forty-two, or forty-three. So it's, it's a pretty wide range. And, and with, you know, what Suzie said, that we have very few people, especially in those upper ranges, that are, that are in the higher end of that range than, I mean, I, I think that you're, as we talk about benefits packages, as we talk about full employment package, somebody that's in the pay grades seventy-three or seventy, yeah, seventy-three, which is a top range of sixty-three, you know, we look at those employees that are in that range, and they're new. There's a couple of new employees that I noticed there.
And I think
So they're probably lower in the range, and, and so they're not, I mean, I don't want it to sound like because we say that the top of range eighty-two is seventy-one thousand dollars, that everyone that's a range eighty-two is making seventy-one thousand dollars.
It's probably more accurate to look at those midpoints. That's probably where the majority of our employees are falling. And the other important item, and why this is brought to you, is sometimes in the middle of the year, you guys will add a position. And this is our opportunity to add that to the pay grade and the pay scale, um, and then have that reflected publicly.
But I'd guess that the vast majority of our employees, vast majority, are less than twenty dollars an hour. And so the people making water every day, they're not making, they're, they're making forty thousand dollars a year. And, you know, so half, not half, but almost half of what an operator at their refinery makes. And so, you know, that's our competition. We're competing with, we're competing with other employers in El Dorado. And, and so we can absolutely fill jobs, we could, we could pay minimum wage, and have either A, a lot of vacancies, or B, a lot of people that can't get any work done. And so what's the value to the city to having people that don't have skills? And if they have skills, then why would they work for us for minimum wage when they go to work for someone else making more? I mean, to, to the Augusta councilwoman's story, we're just rolling them in and out. And yet, I've had my employees come tell me that we need to raise ours because Augusta pays more. So just saying.
Does Augusta do this? On this four fifty-seven?
I don't know that.
Suzie, do you know?
I didn't ask Augusta. I just went on cities that were similar in size to us, not necessarily proximity.
Unlike cases, Augusta's going to be closer to us than some of them that you mentioned. We didn't have any on the lower side of that, is what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm telling you that I've had my employees come and whine to me that they want to be hired, and they point to Augusta.
It, it, well, I'm just
So I'm just saying.
Well, the challenge that we have and that HR directors have is, it's not just the title that is associated with the job, but the actual job description itself. And so comparing a title to a title, they might be doing two completely different jobs. And so we have to pick jobs that have a similar job description to ours to compare to. And that's why sometimes cities don't, don't have an accurate comparison for us.
I, I guess what, where I'm, my thinking is, I think I'd rather be working with the lower half of this than the upper half, to try and help them with their health insurance and that kind of stuff, than to be putting money into four fifty-sevens that's on top of capers. I think there's some of those families that could use that help. Now, that's my opinion.
We only match if the employee's contributing. So we only, we give
So the lower half doesn't have the ability to match like the upper half?
That's, that's not necessarily accurate. If an employee is willing to contribute to their retirement, they can, they can contribute as much as federal law will allow them to. And it, it depends on how much your family income is. That you, we might have water distribution people whose wives are doctors, but they enjoy their job, so they do it, so they're able to contribute more. We, we don't have any way of understanding that.
Well, I, uh, the state of Kansas set up the Kansas Employees Retirement System.
And, and you asked us
And they do police and fire.
Right.
And I felt like that that's a program set for the state that we all, municipalities, all counties, everybody gets involved with.
And, and I guess if I, if capers was doing a good job, maybe I'd be right there with you, Mayor.
Well, then we need to be up and speaking and lobbying that.
But I
Or we can try to take care of our employees.
And I think the difference is that so many of the cities that are our same size are also doing the four fifty-seven with a match. We're not an anomaly in that case. We're, we're right alongside people that are working in communities of our same size as far as retirement goes. And what we're offering our employees, they're doing capers, KPNF, and a four fifty-seven, and a Roth.
And I, and I mean, I'd look at, if you just go back to the sales type project, you're, you're getting that because of what we have here. You, Augusta, I'm not sure Augusta's pouring their own streets. You know, this, that's difficult. If it was easy, everyone would do it. I understand what you're saying, Mayor, but I don't want to settle for employees. I want the best employees we can afford. And so you all get a vote on that, and we'll do the best we can with what we have. But the, the whole four fifty-seven was about parity, and, and within the organization. And, and what you're saying to the rest of your employees who aren't police and fires, they're not worth as much.
I didn't set up the state to police and fire, well, I was told by a fireman. They get more because they can't climb a ladder once they get fifty years old, and that's why the system is allowing more money into there so that they can retire earlier. That's the reason for them getting that.
And I, I'd say that the reason is, is politics.
Well, I'm just
I'm just saying, it's politics. It's the International Association of Firefighters, and it's the, I don't remember what police ones are.
International Association Chiefs of Police.
Now, and what's the Fraternal, F, F? So anyhow, um...
Well, the Teachers Association hasn't done very well then.
They only work nine months out of the year. It sounded to me like they're working pretty good.
Heard they work harder than you can imagine. Five in the morning till ten
Yeah. Mayor, so you know, Mayor.
Yeah.
Both my parents were teachers. I know how hard they worked.
Okay.
So please don't say that.
And they chose that group.
My wife does, and I know what she does.
Okay, and is she, was she at work last week?
Yes, she was.
How about two weeks ago?
No, she wasn't.
There you go. And so we've had that discussion. If, if you want us to get
She left at five this morning, and she wasn't home, and I got home tonight.
Where's she work?
In Wichita School.
Okay. How long does it take to get to work?
Thirty minutes.
Anyways, I just think that's not a, I mean, that's just not a fair comparison. You choose that career path. I mean, I considered, you know, becoming a teacher when I got out of high school, but I chose not to because I knew what I wanted to live on isn't what I was going to get. And I made that decision, and I think you can't, that's, you're right, teachers are completely, they don't get what they deserve. But that's not for us to make up. They sard decision off of that.
Well, I want to get back on subject here. Um, we got the hot, the, the low end at the, okay, the, the very low end at the end took a decrease, and at the other end, which is the high end, highest paid, had almost a, I'm doing the math in my head, so somewhere around eighteen percent increase. Of five dollars and sixty-seven cents an hour. I kind of got an issue with that.
I lost you there.
For one year.
Oh, but
This, this, from last year to this year.
And it's just the rate?
I understand that, but it's the, the high end.
And what it's telling you is that you're
And here, let me finish. Okay, okay. If we go and review this again, and then we find another three dollar and fifty cent difference, and there's another eight percent raise next year. So, so I do, I do see, um, a difference of, of taking the low end versus dealing with the high end, of losing a half a percent, or a third of, or three, a very, very small amount went down, um, and, and gaining fifteen percent. So I kind of got an issue with that.
And it
And it, just because fifteen percent at forty dollars an hour is, is a sizable number versus fifteen percent at ten dollars an hour.
And you get that we didn't make these numbers up, that it was just simply a comparison.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I am using my ability to speak in a microphone at a desk with power, but I think that's a little wrong. That's my opinion. Now, it's great for the guy that's there, which maybe be three of us, three of you, not me. But, uh, I think over the course of years, one, one year is a pretty good chunk of fifteen percent.
The other thing to note on those lowest grades, the majority of them have grades that are higher than them. When an employee gets a certification, they get to bump to a new grade.
Yeah.
And so they start, but once you get to the top, you're not getting certifications that allow you to bump to a new grade.
I, I'm only comparing the top to the bottom. That's all I'm doing. Because if we can go through the middle and find, uh, that, that there's pretty even amounts of percentage raise, if not, uh, a little low at the, at the middle high. Going to middle high, the percent is, has evened out a little bit and then jumps back up. So what I'm saying is, there's a lot of this going on throughout all those numbers.
And we don't do this every, you don't get changes when we do a comparison or you do a code. So
But what
You do this in a year, it'd be the same.
Okay, next year is going to be exactly what these numbers are?
Unless you go in a code right now. And so, yes, you would get the same thing next year, the year after that, maybe not the year after.
And that's where I'm kind of counting.
Yeah.
Are we going to give the, give fifteen percent increases per year? And, and what was the, the percent that we went from thirteen to fourteen, which was, I'll just give the number out. We, we're, we're moving up at the highest paid position, forty-one, fifty-one, went from thirty-five, eighty-four.
And
Okay, what did, what did you do the year before that?
Thirteen was the last time you actually approved this. Last year, you didn't.
The last time we did, did this
December seventeen, two thousand twelve.
No, and it wasn't even that, the last
That's the last time we approved the resolution.
Last time, though, that we changed the value.
That we did a salary survey.
The salary survey was long, two thou, there you go, two thousand eight.
Was the last time we pulled other cities and compared theirs to ours and did a change. So that's why it's a little bit more significant this year.
It just seems like we've done this more often.
No, we do it every year, but we just don't change it every year.
Okay, just trying to get the information to the puzzle.
You betcha.
I, uh, one, one thing, Suzie, when you mentioned the four cities, I think that's a, a big thing, whether it's a one percent or a five percent. You know, I think we need to know our percentage of what they're doing with that. Because if we had, how much do we pay into four fifty-sevens from the city side in a year's time?
I can't answer that off the top of my head.
Okay, have you got any idea? Somebody ought to have some kind of reason. I mean, it's a big number. You get to looking at four fifty-seven and social security and capers all put side by side. There's not a big, big difference between them.
The, the other thing that you'd have to consider when you looked at the percentage that they were matching was what their employees are making as well. That has an impact on it. Because if it, you can only match up to a contrib, a certain contribution by the employee.
Right.
So it would be a, a significant amount of investigating to be able to pull all of those numbers, which I am happy to do if you all would desire that.
I'm basing it off the budget, and you take the four fifty-seven number on each category and add those up. That's what I'm saying. That doesn't take a big deal.
I percent, I percent of wages is what that number is.
Generally.
Okay.
If the employee's
So that's, so that's a big number then, isn't it?
Well, less than social security and a lot less than capers should have. Twenty-five percent of KPNF.
Yeah. I, I would rather help, this is just me, guys. I'd rather help on the, the, um, health insurance, where it helps everybody, especially the lower half of that, and pay less of a match on capers on the other, on the other side. Or not capers, but on four fifty-seven. That's just me.
That's, I think that's part of the budget process, but not part of the salary schedule. Because the salary schedule doesn't have any impact on retirement.
Yeah, but in this resolution we're passing, we're talking about the four fifty-seven in there, or we're talking about capers.
We are? I thought it was just the salary schedule. Well, I've addressed all my concerns. Uh, I'm not going to debate.
It's, it's in here.
Yeah, it's in the resolution.
Somebody want to make a motion? Or got any other conversation?
Resolution number?
Twenty-seven forty-two.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2742, a resolution amending the salary schedule for the City of El Dorado, Kansas, and becoming effective January 1, 2015.
Second.
One second, somebody. Any discussion? Uh, I, I'm going to be voting no on this for two reasons. Not enough information presented to convince me that we need a change in those areas that's in that resolution. And two, I want to be fair to all employees at the city, but my job is also to be vigilant for all the taxpayers in our community. Any other discussion?
I'm going to be responsible to the taxpayers of our community by taking care of the workers that keep our community working.
Any other discussion?
I mean, you briefly touched on health insurance. I, of course, we kind of heard from some of our department heads who were, who were in one of the work sessions, I feel, when we got into a heated debate about this. But I also, following that, heard from a handful of other employees that I just saw on the street or reached out, saying that they were very appreciative of what we had in place and what you guys got accomplished, um, with this, and no one ever raised any concerns or desires for better, more health insurance, I guess. So I feel that's sufficient from what I've heard as far as feedback, and that's all I got to add.
I, I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of, uh, city, the city employees about this, and all of them are, every one of them that I've talked to, which ranged from department heads down to what may be your maintenance one worker on the, on the salary schedule, are very appreciative of the 457 and the ability to have some help planning for their retirement. I think that we, um, do a disservice to our employees when we do things like compare them to, to teachers and say that teachers put in so much more time. I absolutely value what teachers do, but I also think about staff that's here tonight, and I would ask Tabitha what time you came to work this morning and what time you think you'll get home tonight. You know, these are long days that our staff puts in as well, and they do that year-round, and, and work hard, as do the teachers in our community. So, you know, if there's, if there's teachers that are, that are dissatisfied with the retirement plan that they have, and, and they want to get out of the teaching profession, they can maybe find a job at the city. So I think this is a good thing for our employees, and, um, you know, we've had this discussion each year, and I, and again, our employees are very appreciative of the, of the assistance in planning for their future.
Any other discussion? Nick, you want to throw in anything?
No, I made the motion. I'm ready to go.
Ready to go.
Ready to go.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. Motion carries four to one. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number six, adoption of the 2015 city budget.
Commissioners and Mayor, staff has completed the revised 2014 and proposed 2015 budget. We have brought before you a budget with a zero mil increase of 47.036. Any questions?
Commissioners, you got any questions?
Do we open the public hearing first, or do we?
How do we open a hearing at this point?
Whenever you're ready.
We do? Okay. Okay, we'll open this for, to the public. Anybody like to make a comment on the 2015 budget?
Julie?
Well, don't everybody stand up at once. Uh, okay, and I guess we close the public hearing. Do we have any commissioners want to make any comments?
We've worked, uh, pretty hard on this budget. Don't know what the difference is between last year and this year. Do you remember what the total numbers were last year?
As far as expenses?
Yeah, well, just the budget that was approved last year. You have that number handy?
What, as far as expenses or mils?
Well, whatever was in the last-
The 28-
It was 47.237 mils.
Well, yeah, okay.
No, how much-
The number that, this year's 27,031,000. What was that?
23,758,155.
Okay.
That doesn't sound right.
I guess what we spent.
It was 22 the year before. 22 mil in 13.
Those actuals?
Yes.
Not the-
No, those are budgets.
Okay. I'll just say, I guess, to get started real quick, we, uh, we've obviously had a few heated discussions about it. I know people throughout the community have asked me about some of those conversations. I'm not trying to sound funny, but you open a public hearing, and there's not too many people that are obviously too concerned about it, can voice their opinion, but they sure don't want us coming after their dogs. They'll show up for that. Um, but I, I think city staff, I mean, it's been a big learning process for me. This is my second year going through it. First year was pretty blind this year. Felt like I had a better understanding. Um, and I thank city staff and all the department heads for kind of being willing and open to work through questions, um, and keep it wherever we want it. I mean, I know this year's budget, our city manager will have to manage a little bit more with everything, costs going up and all that, but we managed, thank you, city. But we've managed to keep it the same. So anyways, that's all I have to say, um, I guess, to get started with that.
Herb, that was actual. I'm sorry.
Yeah, our budget-
14 was actual.
Right. I think the actual budget number was 28 last year.
Yes.
That, that's what I was looking for.
Sorry, I don't have that information in front of me.
I was trying to blank on you.
Yes, shame on you.
I would say that a, a lot of work's gone into this budget, um, from the commission's perspective, from staff perspective. We've had a, we've had a lot of meetings, um, about the budget. I think, um, we've, we've each had questions. There's some specific areas of concern that each of us had at one point or another within the budget, and those were addressed. And, and I think that, um, you know, this is an example of, of staff working pretty diligently to, to maintain or bring that number down. You know, our, our val, valuation went down this year. So in order to keep the mill levy at the same place that we were, um, they've got to find a way to work with less than they have in the past, uh, because evaluations went down. So I'm, I'm proud of our staff for, for finding those areas and finding ways to make this work, so. And I agree with Chase's comment, um, about discussions during public hearings and discussions on the commission. I think that we've, we're going to find a way to move through that, to get through this, so. That's all I've got.
Anybody else today?
No, I think we've, we've been through everything, and had numerous meetings and workshops and work sessions. My questions have been answered. I want to commend staff for bringing us a, a budget with no mill levy increase, even though a mill's worth a little less this year than it was last year, I believe.
Yes, it is.
I think that's very commendable. I believe the number that, uh, was in the, this same resolution was, uh, a million dollars more last year than it is this year. If, if my math is correct. 28.8 last year.
Okay. I made a note to have that for you next year.
Thank you. Well, I don't know if I'll be able to thank you, but-
(laughing).
Couple of things I'd like to do if I could, commissioners. I, number one, when everybody talks about real estate tax, that's like 2,400,000, that was the actual in 2014, and the operating budget for 2015 says 27 million. So everybody gets all focused on real estate taxes, and that's, I had like 8.92%. We're under 10% of where that money comes from to operate a city. And everybody gets all focused on real estate taxes, and I think we need to be cognizant of that. We just actually, the form that all the commissioners and myself are going to sign here this evening is, is, we just got this a week ago in this form. And I just wanted to, just a couple of things, as you go through this thing that I highlighted, just as a reminder, uh, on page four, we've got five things that go from, transferred from industrial mill levy, tourism, water sewer and refuge into Lake Det Reserve, total of like 230,000, that pays on the stadium, and times that, times 20, that's 4,606,000. So we're charging ourselves like a million six to do that.
So that's on page four?
Yeah.
We're charging us a million six this year?
No, over the 20-year period.
Over 20 years. So in other words, we're putting it to ourselves?
We're, we're charging ourselves 4% interest.
Got to borrow from the bank.
So in other words, we could have borrowed it from Andover State Bank, for say, and paid them 6% over the 20 years, which would have been how much more money?
Or we could have went out and, and done, and got 2%. You know what a 10-year Treasury's paying right now?
Aren't we paying the interest?
4%, 4% is a high number for the City of El Dorado with the bonding, um, with our, with our rating, 4% is high.
Okay, well, I'm not going to argue it. I-
So there are different ways to do it.
I love, I love lending money to myself and paying myself interest versus somebody else.
Okay.
I think it's a great deal.
Want to make that well.
It's not good for the bankers, though.
Bankers have nothing to do with it today. It's people who go out buy the bonds. There's cheaper ways to finance that. Okay, and, and I didn't want to get hung up on that. Page six. You go to page six, I had a question. When you look at the 2012, this is a statement of conditional lease purchase and certificate participations. 2012 John Deere tractor, the 444K wheel loader, says contract term 36 months, tow amount financed 102,000. Payments due in 2014 is 18,000, and payments due in 2015 is 18,000. And I'm getting lost on how you do that over a three-year period if you got 18, and 18's two of the three years.
We're leasing it for two and paying it off in the third.
Okay, so there's going to be a ma, there's going to be a big number that comes out in 2016?
Yes.
Okay. If you go to 8A, if you guys are following in this deal. You got three columns. Your first column is prior year actual for 2013, and you got proposed budget for 2015. You got the police department, the actual expense for the police department was 2,480,000 in 2013, and the proposed budget's 2,306,000. So we're talking, and this is over a two-year period, so I, I give it that. But we're talking 258,000, which is 12.60% increase.
And it's not an increase, Mayor, because you just compared an apple to an orange. And we've talked about that many times, because you compared an actual expense-
Actual expense.
-to a budgeted expense.
To a budget expense.
That's an apple, and that's an orange.
Okay, then why shouldn't a budget be an actual number that we're really trying to do?
Because you can't do it.
Okay.
Okay, well, you could. What don't you want the budget to pay?
I think that number's too high, Herb, is what I'm trying to say.
No, I know you think it is, but it's not.
Well-
It's, it's a reflection of the reality of living. And so I don't know, again, and I've said this, I don't know how many times, I don't know who's quitting today.
I know what you're saying. And I'm saying that I have a different feeling on budgets than you do. So let's kind of keep it at that at this point. I, the, the fire department's 18%. Public Works 14. Uh, Parks is 21. The, the number that really, I was going to ask, and you might have answered one of the meetings I missed, special projects, that's up like a million five. What special projects do we got in 2015 that takes that from 369,000 to a million eight?
That, no, that, that's our contingency reserve.
That's a million five.
Well, Mayor, if you add that number-
I'm just asking.
I, I'm just telling you, again, since I wasn't prepared for these questions, um, if you, if you add that number or take that number from the 2013 actual, you'll find out all those other things must have gone down. Because that's 9 million. I mean, you'd bid a $9 million budget, so it's like nothing went on. 600,000 up, it'd be 600,000, let's zero that out. Now you got a 600,000 dollar increase total. And so it's like nothing happened.
So that million five increase is what now? I'm, I'm losing you on. There's a million five increase from actuals to your budget going in?
I'm saying that if you look at that number, that's all of the increase in the overall proposed budget. If you subtract that from the 10.8, you're down to 9 million dollars. So it's essentially flat. So when you talked about, so I'm going back to your 20% for police, 15, 18% for fire.
Yeah.
So all those other percent increases are essentially, if you would not pick or choose one or two, but look at the entire column, there's no, there's very little increase.
There's increases in all categories, and it's a million five increase in the budget part of it for special projects.
But not if you look at the bottom line. If you go to the bottom line, it's virtually the same. You go, especially if you go to 14 current, if you go to 13 actual, now you only have 568,000 more spending in 15 than you did in actual spending in 13, less that 1.8 million special project. So if you, if you add the special project, all your 20%, 15%, it would be a lot bigger number than the 10.8 you're looking at. If those ones you picked were reflective of the entire budget and not just the ones you picked.
And Mayor, that is not a special project, so to speak. That is in, in the general fund, Department 58, and that has our contingency reserve for the general fund. So our fund balance is included in that budgeted amount of 1,531,957.
I'm not accusing, I'm just trying to understand. So please understand it that way.
Well, when you take things off of the state budget form, it's a lot harder for me to give you detail, because-
That's what we're all signing, though.
I know, but-
You need to understand this.
But the questions, the questions, in my opinion, should have come sooner than the state form, because I could have given you clearer answers off of this one.
I just got the state form like Thursday or Friday last week.
Right, but-
Mr. Mayor, you got-
But that is compiled of the, what you have received since May.
Yeah.
So, so it's harder, because the state budget forms are a compilation of all of our departments- are a compilation of all of our departments, all of our funds, and it's a lot harder for me to give you detailed explanations off of the state budget form. It's included in the budget forms that I presented to you guys in the workshops. So it, it's a lot easier for me to give explanation of the expenses and why it goes up or down when you use the workshop forms that I gave you.
Mr. Mayor, you received the state form almost two weeks ago, actually.
Did we?
Yes. I put it in the drop box for you.
Was there some changes on that? And then had a final one last week?
There have, there have been no changes.
Okay. Let's, uh, let's go to page ten, a little bit different here, just for people. Industrial mill levy. This kind of has a beginning cash, toll receipts, toll expenses, ending deal. On this one, it says toll receipts are ten thousand eight fifty-four. Doesn't count real estate tax, so I don't know how much is going to be in that. We got unencumbered cash right now, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand one oh seven. So it's got a contractual services for six-hundred-and-nine thousand. Now, my question is, what's that contractual service?
That will be your fund balance again, for that fund. And your mill levy is eighty thousand nine eighty-four.
Contractual services is going to be your balance.
Your fund balance.
Okay. Prairie Trails. Starting cash a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, total receipts five-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. Resources available six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. It shows total expenditures of six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand with no cash left over, twelve thirty-one oh five.
What page are you on now?
He's on page thirteen.
Are you changing?
I'm sorry, Nick. And so I'm thinking the general fund, we're, we're transferring over ninety-eight thousand two sixty-three, plus a hundred-and-fifteen thousand eight hundred is potentially what would be coming out of the general fund. Is that correct?
Say that again.
Well, it, it, we started with a hundred-and-fifteen thousand eight hundred, and we have no cash left over with that statement there.
You have to zero out your budgets. It's a state requirement.
Okay, so we're talking two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. Technically, that could be transferred from the general fund.
What, what we do, we take the expenses that Prairie Trails feel that they, they have, and we take their revenues, and we subtract from their revenues the expenses, and we do a transfer from the general fund to Prairie Trails to cover, to make it a zero budget. We may or may not use that money. We may or may not transfer all of that.
So we can spend two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand.
If you, you can, well, you can spend.
From the general fund.
From the general fund, ninety-eight thousand.
Plus the cash.
Well, the cash is Prairie Trails' cash. It's in your cash.
The one-hundred-and-fifteen is Prairie Trails' cash. The transfer is only ninety-eight thousand this year. So we have gone down over the years in Prairie Trails' transfer.
So yeah, just, I guess to clarify, so 2013 was transferred from general fund was a hundred-and-four thousand.
That was actual.
Actual. Estimated for fourteen was two-hundred-and-forty thousand.
That was budgeted.
Budgeted for fourteen. Budgeted for fifteen is ninety-eight thousand.
Yes.
Let's go to page fourteen. I don't want to get hung up on this all night. Water utilities. Actual of 2013 showed total expenses of three million six twelve eight ninety-four. The budget shows forty-five seventy-four eight twenty-one, so that's nine-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand nine twenty-seven, which is a twenty percent, twenty-six percent increase between thirteen, which is actual, and fifteen, which is budget.
Which were the apples and oranges.
Right, so we're talking nine-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand between apples and oranges there.
Right.
I'm just hitting the highlights on this. One that caught my eye, too, on page sixteen. Data processing. Actual total expenditures was seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand oh ninety-two in 2013. And the 2015 budget shows a million forty-five thousand six twenty-six, so that's an increase of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand five thirty-four.
We have a change in.
Which is thirty-seven percent increase.
Yes, we have a change. That was one of the questions that were answered at the workshop. We have a change in how we are paying out some line items, and so there is more going to be paid out of data processing this, next year than there has been in the past.
And it's been in, so instead of a individual ordering a new printer or ordering a new telephone, all of it goes through data processing. So the increase here was actually lowered lines throughout the budget. Under the data processing line, or what was it called?
It would be under the computer supplies line, I believe.
Okay, let's go to page seventeen. Lake Debt Reserve. If you look at prior year actual for 2013, you guys are all on that page. It says unencumbered cash that we had on one-one twenty thirteen says a million eighty-six thousand four thirty-four. Transfer from water fund was, was two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. We got an unrealized gain or loss of two forty-seven. And we got interest on our idle funds of two-hundred-and-forty-three, so we got total receipts of negative twenty-two thousand seven hundred. So we actually ended up with, and I know that's a paper loss, so I'm trying to make a statement here.
Very good.
That we're twenty thousand less than we were when we started the year and put the quarter of a million dollars in.
And you're exactly right. It is a paper loss. We will only lose that money if we cash in our investment.
We will lose more money as time goes along.
No.
If interest rates go up.
No, it is fixed.
If interest rates go up, the, the securities we are invested in will become worth less because of the strip bonds.
And if the interest goes down, they'll be worth more.
At cash value.
Are we going to go down or up from this point?
Mayor.
You told me it was going to go up, didn't you?
And Mayor.
Yeah.
The sun's coming up in the morning.
Okay.
I'll, I'll say that. I'm not going to say whether interest is going up or down. I believe that it can't go anywhere lower, can it?
That's my, our risk is upward, that's my point.
Our, these assets are making four or five percent? Is that a?
I don't have that in front of me.
Can I have, do you remember?
It's, it's like five percent if you hold them for the full twenty-five to thirty years.
There you go.
Yes.
So. Now, why wouldn't we want to take that money and take a profit with the rates low and pay our debt off that we're paying three-point-five-one percent on?
Because the investments are for a different purpose. The investments are for the 2081 debt. The debt you want to pay off comes from the water fund. That's different money.
And even if it wasn't, let's say that you did it, you still just lost two percent.
You lost two percent. We need to have a conversation on that.
If you're making five and you're paying three, what's the margin?
The one you're making five on, you get no interest off of. That bond's been stripped, has no interest. The other one that you're paying on actually adds back to principal every year at over a million dollars. Now, if interest rates start up and that value goes down, you got one that's paying interest and one that's not. You're going to have one, if it's not paying any interest on it, Herb, you can't reinvest that. I'm telling you, there's a lot of rate risk in those things that you're involved with. That's my opinion. And it says lake debt reserve, and this is a lake debt. So that's my point. But that's, that's for another day.
But we're all involved in that, not just Herb. Clarify.
I'd like to, uh, get some investment people in that conversation, too.
We have some available.
We have investment people in that conversation.
Would you like for him to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
He's here.
I'd like to have a meeting sometime with, with these groups. I'm telling you, let's have a meeting, because we need to look at the whole picture on what we have and where we're going.
Well, I'm sure he could address some.
I'd like to, I'd like to know if that's very true, that our investments are ready to crash, are they?
Well, it just showed you the paper loss is two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. Now, what happens if one of these days we decide to sell water? And you have these securities out there when interest rates have went to six percent, and you know what these things are going to be worth? And then you're sitting there saying, well, we need to do something before the thirty years.
Mr. Mayor, a portion of the investments that you're looking at, that you're talking about, you know, you're going to have a six percent investment rate in a couple of years, they're at six percent right now. The ones that, we have some short-term investments that are at a lower rate right now, but the majority of our long-term investments are at a higher rate, because we expect that we will get at least five-point-two-five percent on any investment we have for the lake, lake debt.
Instead of having lake debt reserve hanging out there with money sitting around, what's, what's the short-term debt span? Or short-term rates?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have it in front of me. It was part of that memo that I gave you a couple of weeks ago.
And you did a good job with that. Less than one percent, but we're paying three-point-five-one.
And, and again, that goes back to the fact that it's different money. The money invested is for the 2081 debt. The money that, the debts that you're talking about for six million and two million come out of the water fund. It's different money.
Let's, let's have a meeting sometime. Yeah, and I'd like to have a meeting, so we can sit down and understand that whole process if we could, so. This is budget time. I just want to point this out, this is a paper loss, and this is the kind of thing that can happen in value. And I don't envision us holding that money for thirty years in that security. You look at the track history of what we done. When we first got in this, we were buying nine percent treasuries, and we sold them. Now, what would those things be worth today? So we sold them, took a profit, rates go down, now we're on the low side, now we're extending out. We're extending out at the wrong time. That's my opinion, that's, we spent a little time talking on that, so. Okay. That's kind of everything that I had in there. You guys got any other questions? One, one thing that caught my eye, and I didn't have time to really. Double-check this, girls. When you look at this budget that we're all going to sign here tonight, and you look at last year's budget, and you lay them down side by side, and you go down through these categories that has unencumbered cash, which we start out on this with one-one thirteen, and we should be taking twelve thirty-one twelve off this other one, and those numbers should be matching. And I'm telling you that when I look at this from last year, I'm showing a difference of seven million one-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand.
Mayor.
Yeah.
We are, our accounting is done on the accrual basis at end of year. We are cash basis when it comes to the budget. So in order for me to back into that beginning balance is what I do. I take the audited fund balance for each fund, and I put my actual revenues in, and I put my actual expenses in, and then I take my fund balance from the audit, I add my expenses and subtract my revenues to get my beginning fund balance. I have talked to Roger Basinger at the State of Kansas, and he thinks that is the best way to do it, because we are on accrual basis. When I put those actual revenues in and actual expenses, those are posted to our system for that year, and so they're going to have some accruals in them. The budget for the state on the forms is cash. So there is no way that that's, I can make it do it, but I think it's better to take a ending fund balance that ties to an audit, that ties to our treasury report, and then back into a beginning. And Roger Basinger agrees with that.
And maybe it's important for the public to know, too, that we're doing this work because of the mayor's phone calls to him. And, but what's more important maybe to the public is, he called other cities, or he looked at other cities, and didn't he say that all but one are just like us? So only one city tied, and it was a little city?
No, it was McPherson.
Oh, so.
Oh, those guys that their commissioners make.
So they do a better job. But so the rest of them did it.
When, when did you talk to Roger?
Last week.
Last week.
Last week.
When did you talk to him?
I don't know, probably two or three weeks ago. Did he write you a letter?
Yes, he did.
Could you read that letter to us?
I do not have that letter in front of me.
Okay. I'd be interested in what the letter says.
He is sending it out to five other cities.
Okay.
And he will be talking to the five other cities, and he has found that they also do it the same way we do it, except for McPherson. And he will compile that and let us know what he comes up with.
Okay. I, I still have problems in, that is a big number.
It's all in.
It's actual cash.
We will, I had.
And how can you trust your numbers when you draw?
I had a presentation ready for you tonight to explain exactly what I do.
Okay.
But we'll do that at another time.
Okay.
And I will explain exactly what we do.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's easier, it's. To me, it's better to take an audited number that ties to your treasury report and back into your beginning balance, instead of making your beginning balance equal by changing revenues and expenses. I like to take actuals off of a, a report out of our system and, and get just one number that's wrong. And, and some of those are, are large numbers, like the general fund last year was five-hundred thousand. Do you know what that was? That was an accrual for a grant, that, for Hope Six Grant. And so that's going to show up as a variance. Well, there was nothing wrong with that. It was just an accrual. We did not receive the money until 2014, but we knew we were supposed to receive the money, so we booked the money. That's why that is in there. That's why that difference. And it can be low one year, it can be high like that one. It just depends on your accruals for that year off of your revenues and expenses.
Okay, so this, this budget we're doing, there's a seven-million-dollar difference. And I can tell you.
Mr. Mayor, where are you getting that number from? Because I, we looked at it the other day, and it wasn't seven million, I don't think.
Difference between what?
If you take this and you take last year's and set them down side by side, and you take the January one thirteen here and take the twelve thirty-one twelve.
Are you saying total?
Off actual expenses. Yeah, off total.
Well, that, that, that could be easily explained for your construction fund. I mean, you have construction in progress all the time, and that is booked, the auditors booked that. But we, that is not a budgeted fund, but it's on your, it's on your state budget forms, because we have to show transfers. So yeah, it's going to be a big number because of construction.
There's a couple zeros on here, but lake debt reserves on here for two million four. Now, I had taken, since we didn't want to do the auditor, I went from 2009 to 2012, I got a twenty-five-million-dollar difference. Now, that's.
Again, it's going to be your accruals. It is going to be, it's going to be GAAP accounting versus cash.
There, there is budget laws, and the budget law says that this 2013 should be actual numbers.
And it is.
And you got actual cash that goes from here to here.
It is actual numbers according to what's posted in our system.
And you're saying that that's, that Roger said And you're saying that that's, that Roger said that the budget law says that that's okay?
He says that that is okay. And I told him, I said, "If you find any other way to do it better, please let us know."
Did he tell you it was not okay?
Well, I wanted to read the letter.
Well, what did it say?
I don't have the letter, and Nick, I don't want the words in his mouth.
Basically, the letter, basically...
I don't know what it said.
What communication did y'all have? I'm not asking for words. I'm asking what the man told you. You said, "You talked to the man." Did he tell you something different?
He said that there was a letter coming to the city.
Yes. And basically, he was, basically, the letter said that the beginning balance did not equal the ending balance of the previous year on the state budget form. And he, and he wanted to...
She did tell us what.
And so, we were to contact him and explain, and so I did. And he, and I said, "Is there another way to do it? Am I doing it wrong?" He says, "No." He says that it, to me, is the best way to do it, because he says, "I would rather your ending balance equal your treasury's report. Your audited fund balance equal your treasury's report." And he says, "I understand now why it's off."
If we could have the letter, and is he going to write us a letter? Is he going to write a letter to us?
I do not know that.
He said he would provide the information. The letter was directed to the finance director for each of the cities he sent it to, and he said, "Once he was finished with his research, he would provide a letter," again, to the finance directors, I believe, "explaining what his results were."
So, my question, my question is, Mayor, how did your conversation go? What were his answers to your questions?
What questions did you ask?
Well, he was investigating it.
He called you?
No, but he was saying that he took the letter and sent a letter to the city. That's what I...
When you, listen, when you contacted this guy at the state on behalf of the city, you had a conversation, what was that, can you not tell us what that conversation was?
I'm telling him that when I looked in the ending cash and beginning cash was wrong, there was something wrong with that. Who am I supposed to talk to?
Not necessarily wrong, different.
I'm asking what his response to you was.
Let's read the letter. What's the letter say?
I want to correct you first. It's not necessarily wrong, it's different. And the reason we're going to find out it's different is because of this.
Okay, hang on just a second, please.
Yes.
When you contacted him, you had a conversation. What was his response to you? Did he answer your questions, or did you just speak and then he hung up?
He didn't know. He had to take and look it up.
So, he didn't, when you, when you said the beginning balance...
He was going to look it up and send a letter.
Okay, so we're saying that he didn't answer any of your questions?
No. But, let's hear the letter. Read it out loud, Tammy.
Which time?
Yes. He also, the mayor called about a year ago, about nine months ago, and about six weeks ago.
Okay, read the letter. What's the date on it?
August 6, 2014.
Okay.
It's addressed to Tammy Schaefer, that's me, Finance Director, City of El Dorado, 220 East First Street, El Dorado, Kansas, 67042. Dear Ms. Schaefer, this office recently received several cities' 2013 and 2014 budgets with an emphasis on variances between December 31st ending balances and the subsequent January 1st beginning balances. In the course of that review, we noted the variances on the enclosed document for the city of El Dorado. Since we are dealing with the actuals column, years 2010, 2011, and 2012, in the 2012 and 2013 and 2014 budgets, we are concerned with the larger variances, since unencumbered cash should be readily identifiable actual number and is the starting point of the budget process. We respectfully request that the variances be examined and an explanation of the variances be returned to this office by September 1st, at which times we will review the responses and share those responses with the governing body of the city. Thank you in advance for your assistance with this matter. If you have additional questions or comments, please do not hesitate to contact me via phone at 785-296-8083, or by email at roger.basinger@da.ksgov. Sincerely, Roger Basinger, Office of the Chief Financial Officer, Municipal Services Team. So, since he gave me a phone number, I called him, and then we talked for an hour, and we explained the process. And I took my audit, and I turned to the general fund, and we, I told him what number I used for my ending fund balance for the actual column on the state budget form. Then I told him, "I take from our budget report, which shows our actuals, I posted the revenues and the expenses." And then I told him, "I take that fund balance, I add back my expenses, and subtract out my revenues, and I get my beginning fund balance." And he said, and I told him that that fund balance that's audited balances with our treasury's report, our cash, and he says that that is good. And so, he's going to talk to the other cities and see what they all do, and get back with us.
So, real quick, can I ask?
Sure.
So, more than likely, just to clarify, that letter was probably sent because you called him with concerns.
Yes.
I was sent, and then you followed up, addressed them. It made sense. And I just want to clarify some of that because the thing, and Mike, I respect some of your, the things you're trying to figure out and get at. I just don't care maybe for the way we get about them, because I feel like some people in the community might be watching this and perceive that there's no trust, which in some degree, there is no trust, but that there's something fishy going on. And of course, it would be fishy to someone at the state to get a call from the mayor of the city wanting them to investigate that and his own. And so, I just want to kind of clarify that, you know, I respect what you're looking into. I just don't care for the way you're doing it because I think it makes it into something that it isn't.
Okay.
And that's, and I just want to clarify that for the community, that we all don't think that.
Chase, he's the chief financial officer. Was the wording "Real concern"? What was the wording in there that he used?
What do you, I'm not...
In the letter. There was something in the letter about concern, that he had a concern.
Well, now, he has a concern only because he's hearing that you're saying that the fund balance, the beginning doesn't equal the end. So, you kind of set us up there.
Well, those are the terms.
But, when he talked to us, when he, when I talked to him, he totally understood, and he says, "I don't see that you would need to change the way you're doing it." He says, "That sounds best that you would put your actual numbers in there instead of changing them to make the beginning fund balance equal your ending." So, I, we ended on the conversation that if he finds that the other cities are doing it a better way, please contact me back and let me know. And he said he would.
So, when given the actual facts of what happened with their budget, he was comfortable?
Yes.
Okay.
We took notes.
And all the other cities. I mean, and McPherson's the anomaly.
Do you want me to read it?
And that's understandable. I mean, he would be, I would be concerned if I worked with the state and the mayor was concerned and wanted him to look into it. I mean, that would naturally concern somebody.
He looked into the same thing I was, Chase. Now, if he was concerned, why wouldn't I?
I think he was concerned because you called him.
Correct. Yes.
I don't think he was.
Oh, I think...
After I talked to him, Mayor, he was not concerned.
He was, okay.
He was not.
Yeah. Well, I'm telling you that in my conversation, he was...
He was. I'm sure he was because you made it sound like...
He had a real concern.
No, I believe that yes, he was concerned when you talked to him because you made it sound like we're doing something wrong. But, we are not necessarily doing anything wrong. We are doing something different than what you think needs to be done. And when I talked to him and explained that, he understood and says, "I think you're doing fine." So, he will let us know if we need to do it different, but as far as right now, we are fine.
Okay, so he's going to send us a letter then?
Some of this...
I do not know how he's going to correspond, but he's going to let us know his results.
Yeah.
And I think this goes back to, some of this could be prevented if we just have the proper communication to know who we're reaching out to on behalf of the commission to look into things, because then I would be able to, you know, defend you if he said that. But, I can't because to me, just looking at it, it looks like you sent him a red flag and then he red flagged us.
I didn't say red flag.
I'm not accusing you.
No, I understand. But, I had this question, I had this question a year ago, and for $500, we could have the auditors go through.
And a year ago, I told you exactly what I told him. It's just, I probably sat down a little longer with him. We have said the same thing to you that I said to him last week.
And the auditors have said the same thing to you that we've told him. This is, this is just the newest person.
The auditors never told me that.
Sure, they did. You wanted it written down. The only thing that you didn't get was you didn't get it written down on paper.
I think it's, it ought to be written down on paper, so we get it straight on the stories to get to changing.
They told you that it was fine. They told you that they looked at what we, what we do. Auditors answered the same question. It's worn out.
Mayor, it seems to me...
All right, let's get off.
Let me, I got something to say.
Sure.
It seems to me like you keep asking different people the same question until you, until you get the answer you want. You've been told by the auditors, you've been told by our finance director, now you've been told by this, whoever this Basinger guy is, and they've all told you the same thing, and you won't turn loose of it. I guess my question is, what are you, what's, you've got a suspicion or something?
Well, let me put it this way. You have budget laws, and if you go out and read the budget laws, it talks about the actual numbers should be in the actual column, and I'm saying that that number is not actual. When you've got numbers that's different...
And you don't think this guy with the 785-296 phone number knows what the budget laws are?
I think he does. That's why he said he had a real concern in that letter.
Only because you told him.
That's before she talked to him.
He's in charge of this.
And she told him what we were doing.
I told him, so he had a real concern.
You called him and told him you had a concern. That's why he sent a letter to the city. And so, I called him, and I explained to him, and he has no concern now.
Okay.
I have another request.
Okay.
On behalf, and this goes maybe for all of us.
Sure.
I understand, you know, there's times when we all, I reach out to people unofficially for some other wisdom or advice, but we collectively, if we are pursuing something that we find to be an issue, under the understanding as a commission, we discuss that together before we reach out to someone on behalf of the commission, correct?
Correct.
But, I, I think this communication, you're all about paper trail. I'd prefer you email, so I could see the emails and you could show me the conversations you all have, instead of just hearing everything hearsay. You know, I think a paper trail would be appropriate if, and an email could help, because I...
So, all we have, Chase, is that letter. You need to read that letter again.
Yeah, I will, but I, but I'm not...
We don't have your conversation.
Yeah, that's...
We don't have your correspondence. And it sounds to me like you basically red-flagged our city for being, doing illegal things that you think are illegal. And maybe it's just because maybe you don't understand what accrual and cash means.
You said we're going against...
Did you understand those two words?
You said we're going against budget law.
Right.
That sounds illegal to me. I want to read you a little quote.
Okay.
From Pope Francis. He said this on Sunday.
Okay.
Okay? And this is a verbatim. He said, "Reject a mindset shaped by suspicion."
Yeah. Well, okay. I'm sitting there saying that I talked to the man, I read that letter over, I know the homework I did, unencumbered cash from the end of one year to the next on a budget law that should have actual numbers. I have problems understanding that.
Mr. Mayor, can I say that...
But, hang on, but the people that, that are responsible at the auditor's office, at the state office, and...
Auditors did not look at that.
And our city, and our city office, all advised that this is how they do it, or the state official was fine with that. Once presented with actual facts and not one of our individual research, with presented with the actual process that we use to present our budget, he's fine with that. And so, I guess I would, I mean, I guess I go back to Nick's comment. I mean, are we just, is this going to continue being an issue until someone gives you the answer that you want?
No, I think this will be fine when he sends us a letter and says it's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to repeat part of our conversation with him last week. You keep pointing out that he had concerns. He had concerns before we called him. When we called him, he said that he wanted to reiterate that there's no impropriety done, or on the part of the city. We have a clean audit. They trust our auditors. And that, he's saying that all you're doing by signing the paper is saying that you had a budget hearing. You're saying that we opened it to the public, we let public talk if they wanted to, and that the level of expenses that we are saying we need is represented in the mill levy. That's all you're saying by signing that piece of paper. You're not saying anything about the match of the end of year and beginning of year. And he pointed out several times that we weren't doing anything wrong, and that he thought that maybe the state needed to look at GAAP and see if there was another way that they could look at each of the state budgets. And that is all going to be in the letter that comes back to you, I believe. I just want to point out that his concerns, we've addressed them, and he's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Thank you for reading, listening to.
Yeah. Can I have a copy of that letter, please, too? Okay, we got off on that.
Would anybody like to make a motion to pass the budget?
I move to approve the 2015 operating budget in the total amount of $27,313,53, providing for an estimated mill levy of 47.036 mils, and to certify the same to the county clerk.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion?
Thank you, staff, for working on that, clarifying all the questions that have been put before you.
Second, thank.
Thank you.
I'll be voting no on this. Got three concerns. One, with rising expenses with the level of revenue staying level, we need to operate within our means and what the community can afford. Two, a budget is a principal policy management tool of the governing body. I don't think there's enough check and balance in the city manager with this budget. Three, streets and existing housing needs to be, to be addressed more in the budget. That's my three things of that. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-1.
Mr. Mayor, you'll need to vote opposed. You'll need to say the aye.
4-1. I said nay.
Okay, I didn't hear it, sorry.
Yeah, 4-1. Okay, we're ready for open discussion.
I can start real quick. Real quickly, just want to encourage everyone. Students are getting back into school. Fall seems to always be kind of a good time of the year for community pride, so I encourage everyone to go out and support Butler Athletics. I know the soccer team ranked, of course, our football's third football team, is a fix. If anyone else ranked, I'm forgetting. But, go out and support all of them, and go out and support the high school. They did, I was excited, the event they had at the stadium the other night for high school. What they called that, late night with cats. That was a cool event. And so, go out and support our athletes, plays, concerts. Just get involved as much as you can and support our young people. And then, real quickly, Scott, I think I asked you about this a long time ago. The light on Central and Boyer, the one out by the turnpike, I have seen probably in the last week and a half about four times. There have been close calls with accidents, and I don't know if we can maybe just keep our eye on it or something, but I just feel like consistently, there's people, especially in that corner, people who aren't from the community that come through and don't understand the light yet, and I just keep feeling like there's going to be someone that flies through and...
I mean, it's not a normal layout.
Yeah.
It's...
And I just, I, you know, when those people stop in the middle of the intersection, it just scares me, especially with some of the speed from people coming into town off 254. I don't know. Maybe just keep an eye on it if we can, because I'd hate for us to be reactive and sort of proactive on that deal. But, that's all.
You know, I wanted to, I'll go next, I guess. I wanted to mention late night with the cats as well. It was a great turnout at the stadium. We had middle scores and high scores, all the coaches. There was, there were a lot of community members there. You know, they got to, back when I was in school, it was the midnight mile, and I guess they don't want them to stay up so late now. So, it's late night with the cats. It started at 10 o'clock. It was, I thought it was a great event. Lots of community participation. All the athletes, all the 490 athletes that were out there, from seventh grade up and everything from football to cheerleading and volleyball and cross country, they all got out and ran the track. And at one point, there was, one of the students was, was coming in, making their last lap, and the other students were all done. And I think almost all of the students that were out, all the athletes that were out on the field went and joined them in their last lap. And it was a good showing of unity in our schools, and it really kind of encourages me as to where we are headed with, with our sports programs at, in El Dorado and at 490. So, I just wanted to say that, and thank you to the 490 staff and the boosters and everyone that helped put that together. Herb, I had sent you an email to prepare for a couple of questions that I had, so that you could properly be prepared for the questions. I think that I wanted to discuss the community market and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we tasked you guys with a couple of years ago.
Sure. I guess we can start with the community market. It is in your 2015 budget. It's a sales tax project. We've already set up a project for it. We've been working with the owner on the purchase of it, and so, actually have an option prepared to sign, ready to go, and kind of waiting on, see if your budget was going to pass, to see what you wanted to do, make sure that there's still something you're interested in. So, that's moving ahead. The, we have got our bid back on professional services for a park master plan, and again, for Chase... a park master plan, and again, for Chase and the mayor who, who weren't here, um, this was tasked, um, to staff, I think, two years ago, um, the commission had Dr. Nelbandia come down and talk about work, and one of the things that came out of that was, uh, you all wanted us to update the master plan and look at that. And so staff's been working through that, worked with the rec board, Kevin's here, actually, he can talk more about it. We went through a selection process this spring and are at a point where, um, we're ready to go forward with it.
Yes, we did, uh, visit with the park and rec board about this. They've been kept in the loop, where we stand with the park and rec master plan. We sent requests for qualifications out to 15 to 20 firms in the state of Kansas to provide this work. Three made an initial response, two made a formal presentation to the selection committee. Uh, the selection committee met, selected, um, choice one and choice two. Uh, we've started that discussion, choice one has submitted their, um, bid for this work, um, and that's where we stand at this point.
Kevin, what was our cost for that program, or, you know, if we're going to bid, how much are we talking about?
The, the initial response from our chosen vendor to do this work is $89,680.
How long ago did we do a program, or same kind of deal? Stan, Stan was here, I think, at that time.
Yeah.
And the thing's set on the shelf, so I'm just telling you, from what I know about that.
And I, and-
That's true, David.
And I could even develop it more than that. Um, when, when I came to work to the city, the comprehensive plan sat on a shelf, and, and when I asked about it, no one, none of your senior staff were involved in the discussion. Same with the park master plan, um, it was, uh, like a, a wish list. Well, when we did our comprehensive plan, we engaged the community, and we had hundreds, if not thousands, of people respond to our surveys, so there's great community ownership in that comprehensive plan, and that's what this is. I don't, the, uh, the plan you approved last week will sit on a shelf. Our comprehensive, this park master plan, just like our comp plan and anything else, our airport plan, that's our planning document. When you see a project in our budget on the airport, came out of the master plan. Same with the park plan. If, uh, if the commission still wants this work done, um, it will tell us what the community wants, when it wants it, and how it's going to pay for it, just like the airport master plan, and it won't sit on a shelf, it'll be our budgeting document, it'll be a guiding document for the, for the community.
And as the, as the commission representative on the recreation advisory board, um, I will say that, that the, the board looked at the old master plan, and, and it really came across as just what you, I guess, called it, and that was just a big wish list. It didn't seem to really address concerns or needs of, of the city, or, I mean, of the citizens. So, when, two years ago, when we asked the, uh, asked you to try and move forward with re, re, uh, renewing, uh, so we kind of revisiting the master plan, that was the reason, because it was clear that when you compare the documents of our comprehensive, how that was done, our current comprehensive plan and how that was done, versus kind of the, the process that went into this park plan before, this recreation plan before, was, um, we wanted a better process, and so I think that's what we're looking, hopefully looking at here, um, to get that community engagement, to really find out what the needs, um-
It's my understanding with it, that the existing plan did not have any community feedback. It was all performed by the vendor and quite honestly was poorly done. It had several errors. Uh, both of the vendors that we selected to come in and make these presentations, the first thing on their list is community involvement, community engagement, and community buy-in for what is needed in El Dorado as we move forward. We had two very good firms come in and make presentations to us.
And even maybe a little background, too. In the olden days, so when I first started, um, there's a list out there that it says, if you're a city of this size, you need this many basketball courts, this many swimming pools, this many ice paths, this many volleyball nets, I mean, it was just a list. And, um, and while that may be a good place to start, if no one in your community wants to play basketball, then you don't need any basketball courts. And so, um, both of the people we interviewed, both talked about the old list, and I can't remember what we called that, but it was, I mean, every, people like me all knew it. And so, both, I, I, I do, I think that it, the master plan is a reflection of the community. If the community's not involved, it's, it's worthless, it doesn't tell you anything, it's not worth the trouble. Um, however, my experience with El Dorado is that the community's very engaged, and I'd be very surprised if, when given the opportunity to talk about recreation in their community, that they're not going to be more than happy to tell us what they think. And, and I think, look forward to be involved in it.
And I think this thing can be said for our recreation advisory board. We have a, a group that's engaged and want to do what the community wants.
Thanks, Kevin.
One question's kind of back on community market. I haven't, I haven't talked to one person that's in favor of that community market. I'd, I'd like to have a vote, are we all in favor of this community market?
I am, I am.
I am.
I haven't had any, I'm not saying that no one's reached out to me who wasn't in favor, I've only had people who thought it was an exciting idea.
I think the city owns too much property now, in my opinion, and home lumber companies should not be added to that list, that's my opinion. So, Nick, you think they should be behind that?
Yes.
Okay. Dave, you feel that way?
I voted for the community market, and I still am in favor of it.
I'm not for sure that it's the best idea in the world. Um, I kind of hate when government takes over private business, or doesn't take it over, but steers it in certain directions, it kind of scares me a little bit, but that's my opinion. But then again, I have that mindset.
So we got three yeses for it, one maybe, and one no. Okay.
Once I understand it, I might be more for it, it's just, um, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just concerned when government starts doing more and more and more, taking more and more of the business and providing spaces for business, I don't know if that's what the United States was all about, and it bothers me.
Takes it off tax, we're all-
Also will definitely cut down on the, uh, people setting up in taxpaying people's properties, and, uh, those vendors won't maybe be able to by different laws that will come into effect, that down with future commissions, because they have to set up in the market area. I worry about that. Free enterprise is what built America. I think you saw what happened with Russia running government of our business, so I'm, I'm leery of that. So, it's not that it's not a good idea, it's, it's a great place to provide, provide something, um, whether it's viable or not. Should we subsidize buildings to provide fresher fruits than Dylan's? Should we subsidize a building to provide fresher fruits than Walmart? Are we putting it to them because they're big corporations making money off of us? I mean, there's a way to look at that, it's not the way I feel, but it's the way you can look at it, so. I, 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 I just draw a line, I mean, there's, there's nobody building streets unless you build a turnpike, because nobody wants to get in that business, that's where government shines at. Water systems, people get in water systems, people get, don't really go for sewers too much, even though they are. So I, I just, it's a fine line when government starts entering into business.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess I, while I don't disagree with the bulk of what you said, I don't want to compare the, uh, the concept of a opening and community market as a venue for people to have, or, or whatever different things that, that'll be playing down there to communist Russia, so. I mean, I think that there's a-
Maybe a bit stretched.
To me, it's a, to me, it's a quality of life issue.
You still talking market?
Oh, hell, yes.
Sorry. Well, I'll say real quick, I mean, throwback in there, being, I mean, not trying to bet on the younger generation, I think, you, you know, we're trying to-
We're more socialist.
We're, we're trying to recruit and keep younger people in this area, and if you read, and I, and I, I mean, when originally the idea came up, um, reading community features that attract young people to cities and communities, that was one of them. I mean, we're of the generation that likes the idea of this concept, and I think we need to be putting forth some more effort in our city to try to make some features that are appealing to the young people, because right now, we have a problem keeping them, and we sure aren't recruiting them. My thought.
I just worry about the one part of this, is that we really beat up our street vendors last week, saying how much we're stealing from our already property-based businesses, yet we as a city are getting ready to do the same thing, but it's okay because we control it. We can sell purses one month, we can sell fruit another month, we can sell cars another month, we can sell lots of different things through this venue, uh, maybe not the city itself, but by having those small vendors come in here, so. I, I'm playing both sides of this coin. This open air market, you know, it stems from Europe. You know, being able to walk with, um, through, with this little shop and this little shop and that little shop, and this way it used to be way back when, compared to our big supermarkets that everybody else thought was cool through the 50s and 60s. So, I, I, I just want to make sure that you guys understand where you're going, because Dylan's probably ain't going to like it on Fruit Day or Vegetable Day, I'm sure Fishers aren't going, John Case aren't going to like it when you have Car Day, and I'm, I'm sure that when you're selling trinkets, the trinket dealers aren't going to like selling trinkets, subsidized by the city. So, there's the argument. So, is it a good idea? In, in a lot of aspects it is. Is it dangerous? Eh, 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 you know, it kind of treads on, I know, I'm going to probably be a little pissed on Carpet Day.
Are we going to have a Carpet Day?
Good.
We are now.
Hopefully, I'll be retired by then. But the reality of it is, is, is there's always a great idea, I mean, the stadium, that was the big fight. Mike, you were involved in that fight before, before, well, I'm just talking, but, but there's a perfect situation to where it was all bad, 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 and then we built it, yeah, we spent a lot of money, but we've got, you know, the next hundred years for a lot of good stuff, as Bill said, as, as Chase said, and as I've seen happen out there that wouldn't have happened. So, I, I don't know which side of this, building, uh, the market area is going to be-
Where it's going to fall.
Yeah, where's it going to fall? Is it really going to fall great in the beginning and then fall by the wayside because it pissed off a bunch of business people and they finally said, you know, this is enough?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're going to put a commission in that gets rid of it. That happens.
True, absolutely.
So, I, I just, I, I don't know which way to think on it, because I don't eat that many vegetables.
Never seen any.
I like bananas, is that a vegetable?
Dave, on the football field, I wasn't against that, I want you to understand that. What I was for was for the vote of the people. That should have went to vote of the people, that's my, that's my opinion.
And that's what we're talking about right now, is a market, it, we, you might as well put that to the vote of the people. Might as well put the budget to the vote of the people, Mike. With that, with that mentality, you're going to have the vote to the people, and you know what's going to happen? Nothing's going to ever get done, because-
Or they won't throw a vote.
Yeah, we won't even be able to do a vote on the vote.
Yeah, okay.
That's why we're elected.
That's a tough one.
And I, I'm with you on a home lumber, you know, a hundred thousand dollar deal, but when you're talking a 10 million dollar deal, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about.
Well, that kind of thing I'm talking about, that-
There's a, there's a certain size you've got to vote on.
It's going to be a lot bigger to everybody in this town than a few vegetables sold later on down the road, and it'll make a, a bunch of young people feel good about living here.
Can we build a go-kart track?
Now, there you go, now I'm all about that.
That's the next step on the way to commonwealth.
I'd really like a dirt track, so we had sprint races.
Neither.
But I, I don't know anyone that has one.
You don't get any professional drivers, it's-
Tell me the dirt.
Yeah, he's going to kill people.
Who that?
Dave, I like when you said free enterprise. I like less government, I like covering the things you was talking about, this is about money, too. And we're with a community that half the people is on, um, free lunches at school, so, I mean, that's, there's only so much you can handle in this kind of stuff, too. That's my opinion, so. Okay, who's next? Nick, Dave, Bill, you got anything?
If it was you, wouldn't it? Oh, I'm not even getting to start yet.
Oh, man.
I got a couple of things. Um, I was tickled to see the, uh, the intersection of Olive and Washington on the east side, the firehouse has been, it looks like they've done all the demo and there's new framing going up.
Yeah.
Uh, that was good. The foil house, for lack of a better word, uh, has new siding on it, looks great.
Thank you very much.
And, uh-
What, you didn't cite it?
I coi- I coined that phrase.
The foil, but I saw it, and you weren't even there. No, I just coined the phrase.
Couple of weeks ago, I'm, I thought we were remiss, and we had a city employee had a real nice article in the Wichita Eagle about her, Sue Austin, and the group, the little girl helps her, and I don't know her name, and I apologize, but, uh, that was a really nice article about Sue and how she takes care of these flower baskets and around town, and I think they're great. I think they, they're really pretty, and my wife loves them, and my mother-in-law, when she comes down here, she raves about those, and I just wanted to give a congratulations to Sue and her assistant, and it was a great article, and, uh, showed a lot of pride in both their job and, and the town they live in, so, good job, ladies. And I'm sorry we missed you two weeks ago.
I'll throw on there real quick, the lady cleaning my teeth, who's with Augusta, asked for Brad Myers phone number to get in touch, because they were really impressed with what El Dorado has done with the flowers, and, and wanted to try and pursue something like that eventually in their community, so, just to add on to that, I thought that was a nice, nice deal.
And I think that, to, just to kind of add on that, I think we ran into somebody downtown, he said that they had, after that article came out the next day, they had two or three couples come in from Wichita that were visiting some businesses downtown, but the whole reason that they came to El Dorado was because of the article in the paper, and they wanted to come see the flowers and see her downtown, so, I think it kind of helps all the way around, and Sue and her staff does a great job, so.
That's all I got, now we can hear some more about Russia.
Thank you. All right, now I want to echo the rest of the commissioners that have spoke before me on what they've said, and I want to talk about school zones. I was under the assumption, uh, that we had put lights on all of our major street school zones, and I noticed Sixth Street didn't have a truck route. Were we going to put them on there? And did we get the middle school's school zones taken care of yet? care of yet?
Uh, Public Works got the middle schools, school zone set up, um, just right prior to school beginnings, so that was good. Um, Sixth Avenue there, that would be Lincoln Elementary, has a crosswalk that flashes yellow.
Just a light, but it's not on the sign.
Yeah, there, there, there may have been many, many years ago, but when they put the light across...
Okay, well, let's go back to a few years, I think, and I probably asked this question for four, four years in a row?
Advanced warning signals.
Advanced warning flashing lights so that we don't have to read those little numbers that are...
And you're, and you're right, and so let me check into it.
And I was gonna, I thought we were gonna at least do that one and I, I agreed that the, the third, Third Street on Jefferson was fine and, and then of course we did put them on Twelfth Street, I did get that one done.
Yeah, no, you're right, David.
No, you're right.
Thank you, Nick, thank you.
I'll ask and we'll get them on.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd rather see them, it's a truck route, uh, it's just the right thing to do.
Lincoln, no.
Yeah, because the Third Street's your other one and, and I, and Third Street doesn't
flash on, it's just a flashing crosswalk, right?
Mm-hmm.
But I think that one needs it because it has the same problem Twelfth Street did, which everybody agreed with me, trying to read the little numbers on, is it four o'clock? No, no, it's three fifty.
Well, and you're in the, you're in the zone when the, when you see the, when you get to the crosswalk.
After you pass the tree and hides it, then you can read it for just about a second and a half and then you can seat on forward if you knew that the yellow light flashing meant school's open.
And of course, you're gonna hit a red, you know, hide.
Well, yeah, luckily you're slowing down for the, for the railroad track, so, anyway, that, I think, I just would really like to see that done.
Yep.
Uh, I, I think it needs to be done and I, the rest of the commission can agree or disagree with me.
I agree, I agree.
I'll leave you three votes, Nick.
That's all you got, you got them, you're done.
Okay, I was checking.
Next.
Well, I had a couple of more things, but I think they got discussed, so, now that's enough tonight. Mike, I'm, you're, you're now.
I just got one.
Just...
Believe it or not.
What, a short one?
Yeah, it is short.
Cool.
I've been asked this and I always fumble over this because I don't know the answer and somebody's probably told me, but I'm gonna ask again. How much did the city pay for the country club? Again, I'm don't, I think it was two million bucks, two?
Two point five and then, two point three and then we got four hundred thousand of free money back or some, I don't know.
The net was...
Was two.
Two or two-two. Okay, could I, I'd like to have a copy of the closing statement on that, if I could from the...
Why?
Because I want to look at it.
Does it matter?
Yeah, I just wanna know so I know exactly what the deal was.
It's history.
I'm just, when somebody asks me, I'm gonna be able to give them a good answer.
Okay. Fair enough.
That's all I got.
You gonna call anybody on it?
No, that's why I asked you today, so everybody knows what I'm asking, what's going I, I would still call this gentleman tomorrow, guys, I would tell you, because...
I think you ought to...
In, in that letter, he had concerns and he's the state man.
The letter that she read?
The letter that she read.
But didn't that follow you?
That was before, that was before he talked to her.
I understand that, but I'm saying that I just feel like if he had real concerns, I had a reason to have real concerns too.
He had real concerns after talking to you.
But if I'd have called him, he wouldn't have sent a letter, because I'd have told him about accrual and cash and I understand the difference between those two.
And I understand on a report that goes to the state, when they say unencumbered cash on twelve thirty-one should match with January.
I understand it's getting late, you've got to...
I understand one thing, I'll say one thing, Mike, this board works as a whole, as a, as a unit.
I understand.
We have zero power by ourselves.
I understand that.
Okay? Anytime we're gonna accuse to a state authority, I think you ought to have at least three commissioners behind you on that, so you have a majority to follow up and do something that's severe, okay?
What was severe about it, asking him to look into it?
Well, it's, uh, you wouldn't understand.
No, I wouldn't.
You still don't understand.
I think as an American, as an American, I can ask any where that I wanna ask.
All I know is, is that in, in the commissions, in the things that I've served on, we have a, this, uh, majority rule, it's not a dictator.
I agree with that.
Well, you didn't discuss it with one person on this board.
Until I had my facts in order.
And then you find out you're wrong.
Well, I'll see it when he gets me this letter.
Even though you were told you were wrong, I just feel that's bad, Mike.
When, when he sends a letter...
That's bad, it's just bad, it's bad for the citizens, it's, it's poor performance for a mayor.
Yes, you bet it is.
It is.
When you look at ending balances and starting balances and they don't match...
No, that doesn't have anything to do, as a mayor, that was a very, very poor performance.
All right.
I'm, I'm embarrassed over it.
Yeah, I would be too, Dave.
Yeah, I am.
Go ahead.
The only thing I wanted to remind people in the community about is when you mow to blow your grass back up in your yard, um, when you leave it in the curb, it can clog our stormwater systems and, um, so if everyone would just remember that, that'd be wonderful.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
That move we adjourned.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.